Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Laura Schiffen, and I'm Chairman of the Planning Board and calling the meeting to order at 6:32 p.m. on Monday, January 8th, 2024. Happy New Year to everyone. This meeting is being recorded, and I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hoxsey's present.
Robert Therrien, present.
And Laura Schiffen, present. I have no information on the other members. I also do not have any chairman's additions or deletions to the meeting. I believe a lot of what my questions were will be covered under Beth's report. So next will be 1.5 to approve the meeting minutes of November 27th and December 18th. They have been put in the portal, and I'll entertain a motion.
I have a question on the minutes of the last meeting. And it's item 3.1 Administrator's Report. And then that paragraph, it says, "A letter was sent to owner 98-100 West Meadow Road regarding ongoing site work and land use permitting. We are waiting for information." 22 Main Street, Best Friends Veterinary Clinic, 22 West Meadow Road. It's not clear on, was the letter sent to all of these?
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's probably.
I just was confused.
It might need revision.
It should have been to the owners, right?
December 17th, right? The 27th?
Oh, the 27th. See, both of those on the October 30th.
That was 11/27.
Report as well.
Yeah, okay, so 27, that's.
We just need to put the word "owners" in.
Yeah, so all three did get a letter. You're right. That should be revised.
To the owners of.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, I can add that in there. Good, good.
Why don't you just take that?
And here's another copy for you.
Oh, Andrew said he sent an email to Beth earlier today? That he was gonna not be able to attend?
Yeah, Andrew Shepard said he would either be late or not attending.
Okay.
And Tony Lopez, member Tony Lopez, said he would not be attending.
Oh, so you did get that information? Okay.
Yeah.
So they are absent with notice? Okay, getting back to the minutes. Do you want to take November 27th first?
Do you want to approve them with the comments made?
Yes. Yes, so noted.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 27th, 2023, with the comments made to paragraph 3.1 Administrator's Report. We're going to change "sent to owner" and change it to "sent to the owners of."
Okay. And that would be, if I'm correct, that's going to be under Site Visit/Compliance? Is it in that section?
Section 3.
3.1.
3.1.
3.1 of her report, but is it under Section 3, Site Visits and Compliance?
I don't know if we're looking at the same thing, because there aren't sections.
No, no sections.
Okay, all right. Sorry about that. I'm looking at your reports.
Okay. Oh, I see.
Okay, so having no other comments, I'll take a roll call vote.
Carol Hoxsey, yes.
Robert Therrien, yes.
And Laura Schiffen, yes. So those were for November 27th, 2023. And now about December 18th, 23?
Did you have any comments? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December 18th, 2023.
And is there a second? Robert, do you second?
Yes, I second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Now, I'll take a roll call vote on the minutes of December 18th, 2023.
Carol Hoxsey, yes.
Robert?
I'm sorry.
Do you approve the minutes?
Roll call vote.
To approve the minutes of December 18th?
Yes, I do, yes.
Okay, and Laura Schiffen, yes. These two are approved. 2.1 Announcements and Communications. Beth, will you just take that, since Robert's not here?
Yeah, I have a couple of notices from. A couple of notices of public hearings. First, the Townsend notices from the Conservation Commission. Legal notice pursuant to the Mass Wetland Protection Act and the Townsend Wetland Bylaw. The Conservation Commission will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January 10th, at 8:25 p.m. The hearing is going to be held virtually and in person. The property is located at 106 Haynes Road. The proposed project is to demolish a dilapidated single-family dwelling, cut and clear trees, crush and fill an existing septic tank, and then construct a new single-family dwelling, deck, bulkhead, and well, with grading and associated utilities. Part of the work will occur within 100 feet of a bordering vegetated wetland. The next one is also the Conservation Commission. A legal notice of public hearing tomorrow at 8:00 p.m. The hearing will be held, blah, 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 virtually, same thing. Notice of intent filed with the Conservation Commission by Robert Becker. The property is located at 50 Sonora Road. The proposed project is for the construction of a new septic system to service an existing house. All construction will be within 200 feet of Vincent Pond. That's tomorrow at 8:00. The third Conservation Commission legal notice of public hearing is in regards to an NOI filed with the Conservation Commission by Townsend Historical Society. The property is located at 80 Main Street. The proposed project is for the construction of a building addition, a new septic system, a stormwater management area, and associated grading. Part of this construction will take place within 100 feet of a bordering vegetated wetland, and all of the work will occur within bordering lands subject to flooding and 200 feet of harbor pond. Tomorrow, again, that's tomorrow at 7:35 p.m., both in-person and hybrid public hearings. From other towns, we have from the Town of Peprol, the CDA, will be holding a public hearing on an application submitted, looking, petitioning for the allowance of an addition of a 6-by-21-foot farmer's porch on the front of the property. That is going to be January 31st remotely at 7:20 p.m., and the location is 62 Mel Street is the subject property. And next is also from the Town of Peprol, CDA. An application has been submitted, and it's their petitioning for a variance of 2 feet from the required 30-foot side yard setback in order to allow the construction of a new 24-by-34.2-foot two-story structure to the north side of an existing home, which will consist of a 24-foot-by-25-foot garage and a 9-by-24-foot combination entryway, bedroom, pantry, and laundry room. That will access an enlarged kitchen on the second floor of the addition. This subject property is located at 103 Lawrence Street, Peprol, Mass. That hearing is on, I think I might have already mentioned that. Oh, sorry, January 31st at 7:00 p.m., and.
Excuse me.
Town of Grotton, the Planning Board, Public Hearing Notice Regarding the Town Center Overlay District Special Permit and Site Plan Review. This application is submitted by CJS Workshop LLC for Site Plan Review and a Special Permit in Town Center Overlay District. The proposal is to utilize the existing premises at 25 Station Add of former built garages for logistic turnaround and active storage to support CJS Workshop's expanding business. And that is going to be held on January 11th.
What town is that?
7:00 p.m. That's.
Grotton?
And that is virtual, so you can log in. Town of Ludenburg Planning Board announces a public hearing on January 8th at 6:05 p.m. And is to hear and review a stormwater permit application for 317 to 321 Sunny Hill Road. The applicant and owner, Tim Battles, 33 Lamar Park Drive in Peprol. And materials are available for reviewing. So that is going on, has already gone on. But actually, they have the wrong year, because it says January 8th, 2023, in their legal notice. I don't wonder if it actually went on. Because Beth, no, no, you can't hold a public hearing if you can get the date wrong. So that's it for that section. I take care of 2.1.
Thank you, Beth. And so why don't we just, if it's okay with the other members of the board, like to hold off on 2.3 and 2.4? We can go to 2.5, because I see Jonathan is here from MRPC.
Oh, wow, that's great.
Yeah. So Jonathan, do you want to join us? Nice to see you. Did you have some report for us tonight?
Well, it was my understanding that the Planning Board was going to review the updated draft bylaw for the multifamily zoning overlay district. So I thought I would make myself available in case there were any questions on how some of the language might have been developed, why we made some of those choices, or anything about next steps at this point, since the district local technical assistance program that a lot of this work was done under is just about run its course.
Does the board have any comments in reference to this? And Jonathan, could you share that report with us? Screen share that?
Yeah, here's a copy by the board members.
They may have to print it out, okay. So how about Jonathan, if you give us next steps?
All right.
I have more pages.
Oh, okay. And if the board members have any questions?
Well, there is a technical memo that will summarize all of the work that was done over the past year and the process we undertook and what went into every step. So Townsend will be receiving that within the next few weeks to wrap up the project. And the end of that technical memo will also give some recommended steps from MRPC as to what the next actions the town should undertake to complete this project, presuming they do not receive any more aid. As part of some of those recommendations, well, one would be making a final determination of which of the three final districts, your district sites Townsend is pursuing, or if they want to incorporate more than one of those sites into a somewhat larger overlay district. Another step is going to be continue to review and finalize bylaw language, especially in regards to anything that I either conflict or might need clarification or just slightly changed to better suit the needs of the town. And then the last step would be to get the community on board, get the residents on board, so that when this is brought to town meeting for a vote, it will pass, so that Townsend won't have to worry about trying to rush something through by the end of next year, 2025. It's strange that that's already on us, but as a small adjacent community, Townsend will have until the end of 2025 to make a final submission to be compliance. And the idea was, as we were working on this, we would love it if Townsend were to receive that designation a little bit earlier, if possible. Hopefully, depending on what progress is made over the next couple of months, it could even be brought before the spring town meeting for a vote. Or potentially, if it needs more work, more time, we could do it in the fall town meeting after spending several more months revising, if that's necessary.
Also, we would have to have a public hearing first, before it would go to town meeting. So we should plan on that. Hopefully, we'll have a goal to set forth to you within the next 60 days and relook at the verbiage now. Can I, Beth, can I just ask you, has the current verbiage gone to town council?
No, this is fresh off the press today.
Okay, so let's give us some time to review what we have.
Yep, absolutely.
And then see what the board says. And if we have changes that we want to make, we'll make sure that town council reviews it first and then get you involved in that as soon as we have that. And then plan, rather than waiting to the last minute, plan for hopefully a public hearing, because we may have some other things to hold, and I don't know if we'll hold it at the same time, but we have changes to the regulations for stormwater and definitive subdivisions coming forward too, and those will need public hearings as well. So any questions from the board for Jonathan? I don't think anything else at this time, but thank you for coming and participating with us. You can stay as long as you want, obviously. But I did want to address you while you were still here, and I wanted to keep.
Absolutely. And if you do have any questions at any point, I will remain online for at least a little while longer.
Okay, all right. You're welcome to. Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yep.
Regarding the public hearing, the annual town meeting is scheduled for May 7th. Would April 8th Planning Board meeting be reasonable for the public hearing? Or would you like to have it sooner?
No, I think it's good. Yeah, I think it's good. I think the April 8th is good. We'll still have one more meeting before the annual.
Yeah, on the 29th. Yep.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you for that, because that gets us on the calendar then.
Okay, great.
And then, like I said, in the meantime, if the board has any questions, we can get with Jonathan or town council before that April 8th. Just have that on our next agenda as well, so we do an update.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. So in reference to 2.3 and 2.4, at the last meeting, we had just gotten changes to those documents that town council had made. And we were going to discuss that tonight. If you wish to discuss that, we can. If not, we could put that to the next meeting. Because whatever we decide actually has to go to a public hearing. So I was thinking that now that we have town council's input and we have what we had come up with going through all of those documents, all of those pages, that now would be the time to have the feedback for a public, now would be the time to have that public hearing and feedback from them so that we have time to make further changes, see how that goes in public hearing, and also discuss with town council before a meeting. Because I think that these two things, we should be able to also have the public hearing on April 8th and present them to town meeting. Or should we have that in March for those two items?
Oh, for the regulations changes, yeah. I think, yeah, I would say. So the regulations changes can be done at a board meeting after the public hearing. So I guess I would just ask the board, which of the changes are more time-sensitive? You know, in terms of what do you want to get changed now? And I would recommend, you know, looking at 2.3, discussion of that Planning Board Regulations section about the easements, where that might be more time-sensitive if you want to make that change. Then, you know, pick a couple of regulations that you can change at the board level after the public hearing. You know what I mean?
Okay. Okay, so please clarify that.
Okay.
These two, the regulations do not have to go before a town meeting, but we have to have a public hearing.
That's right, exactly. And it just has to be publicized, and then I'll collect comments and bring them to the board.
I would do them both. I would do them both.
Okay.
We went through them, we got legal counsel advice on them. Now we want a public hearing and then decide after that.
Okay, so 2.3 and 2.4, and schedule a public hearing. How about would the February meeting, like maybe the 2nd February meeting or the 1st February meeting work for that?
What are those dates, please?
The 12th or the 26th?
Okay.
We could do the 12th or the 26th, doesn't matter. I would like to, yeah, run them by town council one more time, and that can be done during office hours at the end of January. So that's plenty of time, if you want to do the 12th or the 26th.
Well, town council has given us his opinion. We've not given anything back to him. So my thoughts were to have the public hearing, see what we have, we have legal counsel. We get what the public hearing comes up with, we meet and hash out what we think is acceptable, and then finalize it with town council.
Okay, okay. So I understand that. So then, yeah, if you want to do the 12th, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm good. Is the board good with that?
I have, I don't feel that I've gone through this sufficiently enough.
Oh, Robert, we're not talking about the bylaw now. No, we're talking about the regulations, 175-13, definitive subdivision.
Yeah, the 2.3 and 2.4 that we went through page by page, paragraph by paragraph, made our changes, sent them to the attorney. We sent them to the attorney. He gave us highlighted, well, I don't know how well they committed, highlighted, but we have his response. Now we need a public hearing.
You haven't discussed 175-45 yet. So you can either do that tonight or next meeting. I'll have the wording change, in-trap changes for you. Right now, you just have town council's recommendation, which I haven't yet put into an official document.
Well, I think, so, Robert, if you're okay, because we're thinking about February 12th. So that's a month.
Yeah, exactly.
That's a month from now for the public hearing. So you've got plenty of time to look at both of those and then listen to what the public hearing brings about.
Okay, great.
I just need a clarification. A public hearing is going to be on this?
Yes.
Okay, it's on the M.D.
Yeah, that, and as well as the stormwater bylaw regulation that I sent you regarding easements.
Okay.
Yeah, where we're trying to.
So that's the two topics?
Yeah.
Regulations that would go for a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, because they're somewhat time, well, the stormwater is time-sensitive, you know, so we really like to get that cleared up, if you will, or more clear, you know.
All right, so this is February, what?
12th. That would be February 12th, Monday, at a regular board meeting.
And the other one is what?
Oh, same thing, yeah.
The one for the overlay district with.
April?
April 8th for the overlay district.
April 8th, that's.
April 8th, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And that, just to clarify, Beth, 2.5, the overlay district one, that has not gone to legal counsel, or it has?
It has not.
Yeah, so that's going to be, that's going to go to legal counsel before the 8th. Or no, what did we just say? We're going to have the public hearing and then send it to him?
Well, I would do both, you know what I mean? I think it's good to have town council review before and after.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so any changes that are suggested are verified by him.
February 12th and April 8th will be the public hearings.
Can I ask who prepared this 2.5?
MRPC, Jonathan Ross. In combination with staff and planning session.
Right. He's met with us a number of times before, and it was prepared by MRPC. So if you have any questions for Jonathan right now, if not, I'm sure that he'll join us again.
Okay.
We'll do that public hearing on April 8th.
Yes.
Right?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. So that takes care of that. Going down to 2.6, the mandatory referrals. Can you screen share what we have to do on those?
Okay, who would like to screen share?
I'm not logged into the meeting just yet, but I have to log into the meeting. Give me one moment.
Okay.
And I'll do that.
If you want, I see that, is Brett there, Brett King?
Yeah, he's right here.
Okay, and so we can go to 2.7, since he's here. And I think there's just one slight typo, WK Realty Trust, so there's an extra T there. Request for certificate on completion stormwater management permit number 27. So how are we doing on that, Beth?
Well, I was going to just update in the administrative report that we did receive some of the requested materials early today. We didn't get a chance to review them, and we would, you know, aim to provide. We didn't get a chance to review them, and we would, you know, aim to provide those at the next meeting. There has been an update, I mean, there has been some review of the materials that the board received in November, December, or December?
Well, December 18th, yeah.
So we have a number of notes here that, I'm gonna let Jessica present, if that's okay, Jess?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. I might need some help, because I don't have that in front of me, obviously.
All right, so what I can do is I'll hop on and screen share, and I'll let you guys look at the notes that we've come up with already.
Do you want to give us an update, Jessica?
Who's, who's those are these?
Those are mine, Robert.
The staff reviewed what they submitted, so these are Jessica's notes here. And those are from comparing the as-built to the approved plan of record. So this is just the differences that we're doing.
Sorry, I'm trying to pull up a plan as well, hang tight, please.
Jessica, would you like to screen share?
Um, no, just give, once Beth logs on, she can have the permissions, that's fine.
Stonefill is strip along driveways. Toe of slope drainage cache.
Those are kind of my chicken scratch notes, sorry, it's nothing formal on there. All right, so, actually, yeah, Hartley, if you don't mind, can I have, I'll take screen sharing for this one while Beth's getting logged on, yeah, that's fine.
Thanks.
These notes are deviations from the originals, is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right, yep. So we'll start, I guess we'll go clockwise, starting on the western side of the site, so I have up on my screen shared the as-built plan. You guys in front of you have both the as-built and the approved plan. So you'll see on the approved plan on the, and Brett, please correct me if I'm wrong too, on the, the western side of the entrance gravel drive, on the approved plan shows that there should be like a riprap sort of gutter drain conveyance to help trap stormwater and filter any sediments in there. And as, as per the as-built plan in front of you guys, that feature is not, was not constructed. The second sort of major deviation was the northwestern and the northeastern stormwater basins are connected by one long pipe. Again, you're looking at the as-built here on my screen, on your approved plan set, the pipe terminates before that northeasterly stormwater basin.
Oh, the river and shower looking like the same direction, so this is, um, this is the thing that was approved, and this is what has, was built, going right into the basin.
It still does this. What's, this is the overflow?
Yes. And that, that is built.
That's what?
That is built, yeah, there's the as-built here.
And this is what we reviewed before?
This is the as-built, yes.
Yeah.
And this is the plan of, uh, plan of record. So what we did is we looked at the differences, Jessica's just trying to explain to you what they are.
Well, did you discover anything of concern?
I didn't continue. I want to continue.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I'm going through right now, it's not necessarily even concerns, just sort of the bigger deviations that could potentially, you know, have an impact on stormwater treatment or control or sheet flow at the site. So as we move over to the northeastern stormwater basin, during the site inspection that we did back in August, right here at this pipe discharge, we noticed quite a bit of scour already starting, which is understandable, given the volume of rain that we received over the summer. So we had just, you know, recommended putting some sort of stabilization, like riprap, right there at that discharge point. On your approved plan set, also sort of at the toe of slope here, showed that there was gonna be a riprap berm, again, probably just to help catch, capture some of the, the sheet flow and slow it down a little bit before hitting the pond. So per the as-built, that riprap berm was not constructed as well.
That was not a riprap berm, that was an infiltration trench in the bottom of the pond that was constructed, unfortunately, you just can't see it because really, they don't work. They just get silted up, and, I mean, I guess I could go out there and dig some holes in the bottom of the pond to show you folks that it is there, but that was not a berm, I don't believe, Jessica.
Okay.
That's like a two-foot wide trench dug in the bottom of the pond, is like maybe, maybe you'd call it a wicking trench.
Okay. Okay, yes, again, that's, we're just noticing what was on the approved plan versus what's not shown on the as-built too, so I, I can't, I don't have the approved plans in front of me, but it might have been labeled as something else. But again, yes, if we can just get better justification, that's totally fine, I think. Well, up to the board, but anyways, we'll move south down here to the, to the more central stormwater basin. As Brett had previously explained, the, the roof drainage and some other water features of this building were conveyed through this, you know, different series of underground pipes and infrastructure that then discharge into this pond. The pond was constructed a little bit different shape and slopes than per the approved plan, so just with the change of shape and then the, the added discharge coming off of the building, we just want to make sure that the current pipe is, or the current pond basin is of adequate size to capture that additional water. So those are really, I, I think, again, you guys have my notes in front of you, not me, but I think those are some of the bigger deviations. As per the regulations that I have on, on one of my notes there on that map in front of you, there, there is a requirement for a certified as-built, and then a narrative explaining the deviations and that they, you know, will, will not be problematic or, or cause any further violation or anything to the provisions of the stormwater bylaw or regulations, so Brett did provide a memo earlier today for us that explains, you know, basically what these deviations were. We just need a little bit more reason as to if the deviations, like are, are the current stormwater infrastructure is still adequate based on the deviations. And then, I think that pretty much brings us up to speed.
So Beth, do you have that memo?
I do, and if you go into your portal or your folder, I can break it up on screen if you want now.
Yeah, why don't you do that, because I'd like Robert to look at that.
So if Hartley could give me screen sharing?
Okay, I thought I already did, but I'll double check, hold on. You're under Townsend Administration?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I did make you a co-host.
Can you enlarge that?
Let's see, Mr. Kim is here.
Mr. Kim.
Brett?
Yes, sir.
Can we, can you come here a minute?
Sure.
What are your comments about this filter along there?
So, that filter is shown on this trailer, so the comments on this filter is, to me, it, it didn't go anywhere and it, and, you know, I, my opinion is,
It wasn't doing anything.
Wasn't doing anything. So, I mean, it wasn't installed, okay? But this is a gravel driveway, if this is a paved driveway, I guess I could see it, but.
Will it be paved?
I believe in the regulations, I cannot pave it.
Oh, really? And, and the riprap here, you did put more in?
So, so this is a, this is a riprap, like, we'll have to look at the details and see what they call, but to me, this is like a wicking trench, this is at the bottom of the pond. This pipe used to stop here.
Right.
And what happened is this all eroded. I mean, let's face it, we, we can't grow grass overnight, so over time, there was erosion and put some silt in the bottom of this pond, and that is in, but you just can't see it.
Okay.
And then the same thing with this trench, the reason this catch basin and the roof drains were added, because all this water still went into this pond, but once again, was eroding the driveway.
Right.
And, you know, cross-sections from the roof drain leaders, so that all washed into that pond. So, we added this catch basin, and we added the roof drainage system around there. And that's why that was added.
Well, I don't see, personally, and I'm not the guy that's gonna certify this.
Sure.
I don't see where the deviation has made any worse conditions than what was originally designed for. And I think it addresses physically what was happening at the site. So, the only thing that I think is remaining here is that we need a a professional opinion on these changes and whether they were gonna suffice or if there's a big deficiency anywhere. But based upon the site business and the alterations that were made, it appears that the conditions have been met in another way. There was a spillway that we did not put in.
Yeah, that, we can put that in, that's, that's one of the things that were brought up in the meeting, and I said, you know, we, we intend, there's some washout here, there's some, from all the rain we had, there's a little bit of washout, so we said we'd fix that in the spring, seed it, I, I don't want to do it now, it's a waste of time and money, and if you folks would like, we can put this overflow in, I just overlook that.
Well, I think it's a precaution, we put the overflow in. And, and what was the other issue there?
There's just some, there's some erosion. This whole, all this water runs this way, so there's a little bit of erosion right on the base, right at the top of the basin.
Right.
So I was gonna lome and seed it in the spring. But as far as I know, that's all that was there. Is there anything else there, Beth?
No.
Basin number one?
Is there any other vegetation you're planting there?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna reseed it in the spring. Like I said, it's a little bit washed out.
I think that the only thing that was mentioned, Jessica, remember, the length of the pipe feeding right into here, is it eliminates the swale, right, so that was meant to collect some over sheet flow, and that's non-existent, so it's basically all the sheet flow that was supposed to come down here, you know, basically is potentially bypassing, I don't know what you have there.
The, the swale is still there, but it's not, it's not as defined, it's, you know.
So, so that's the design.
The problem we had is this just kept washing out. Whenever it rained hard, we, there was always channel, there was always channeling.
Well, I'm sure with the water coming this way and then what was coming here.
And this really, and, and this is why I did it, that really, that's not a four bay. You know, if it was a four bay, it would be different by there, to me.
So the velocity of the flow was eroding everything.
Exactly.
Yeah, I wonder why that wasn't designed that way?
So that's why we extended the pipe into the, the actual pond, but if, if you go up there, of course, you can see it now, but when there's no snow, you can see there's a little swale there that.
That will catch it, and it's just not running off into scale, that's the whole thing, the whole thing, the water off property. And then that was the, yeah, that was the only area that we noticed rills and.
Yeah.
How, how much was it?
Well, we have pictures of it, but it was, you know, but it, again, it's significant rills and, and, yeah, erosion, however, you know, he, he could riprap it, you know, I mean, there's supposed to be riprap here, actually.
So, no, so this is, this right, this riprap is at the bottom of the basin.
Oh, okay.
And it's like a, a trench drain, leaching drain, wicking trench, whatever you call it, I think that's, the intent with that is to get the water back.
Wouldn't you, I'm just suggesting maybe an alternative. The reseeding in the spring could do the job, but that could get washed out again too.
It could, it could.
So, in anticipation of that happening, why wouldn't we consider putting a crest, uh, stone rib here along the edge that would slow the water volume and absorb more of the water into the ground, and that will filter into the basin?
We can do that, to me, it'd be more of a maintenance nightmare, but, I mean, if that's what you folks wanted, we're not opposed to it.
I'm saying that, that'd be a more permanent solution than sawdust.
I think Beth's version of washouts and mine are a little different, I, I, I don't think it's that bad, and there is washout there, don't get me wrong, but I think that if we, you know, my thought was always just to re-lome it and seed it and put that hay mat down. And as long as we did it at the right time of year, we, we could probably get some grass growing there, but it is, it is washed out, there's no.
Can we put some soil retainer mesh in there?
Yeah, that's what, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think that might work.
Start with that, and if that doesn't work, we can, we can definitely go the stone method.
And that, we're gonna put in. I don't think there was any changes necessary here, we actually improved the situation. I think we improved this situation too, if we do what we're gonna do here. I don't know what to say about this, because it was engineered to be there, but according to you, that would be something needed if we had a hot surface there.
We've never had any runoff, that's all I can tell you.
Yeah. Yeah, it would, it would seem that.
Do you have a picture of that area, if you're interested, Robert?
Yeah, it would seem the water would be going in this direction. Oh.
See that? That's what I'm talking about in terms of like the rills, you can see them here.
That's at the crest of the basin?
Yes, right there.
Yeah.
So that's catching overland flow, you know, sheet flow, if you will.
Well, I think with the the mesh and the sawdust, that probably would work.
We're gonna, I mean, we're gonna fix that, that other area you see, I mean, that, this spring, I hope that's not an issue, we're gonna.
The area in the picture?
The area in the picture, not only along the pond, but we're gonna fix the other area where there's not a lot of grass there.
Oh, on the other side?
Um, yeah, on this side right here, just, just past the, like this area right here. I think it filled in a little, but I'd like to,
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to make it a little better, so.
So that photo was taken in August?
Yes, August 3rd.
After a big rain?
Oh, gosh, I, I don't know if we recorded rain, we did on our sheets, but I don't think we did. Record the rain. For that visit, but, yeah.
Every day in August.
Yeah.
Ask me, because I, I was dealing with my pool, so I know.
Overflowing pools.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'd be... Again, I mean, based on real world situations, I think what was done here was a practical solution. We have the fact that the shape of this basin here is different. It still looks like it's about the same volume. So, I don't see a dramatic reduction in retainer gear. Um, I would have to say, I'd have to agree with, if this is, has no function at all, then probably not necessary. I don't see what it would do. I do see if it were paved, where that might be necessary. But because it's all gravel, which means it's porous and there's not, it's not a hot surface. So, if they're not going to asphalt that, then this is really an overkill. Other than that, I don't have any other comments to make. And...
Thank you, Robert.
This is the area we were talking about, putting the retaining mesh and the saw.
Yeah, it, it, it's worse. It's the worst right here, right at the edge of the pond.
Look at the contours. It's not that rapid slope and change of grade there.
No, fairly gentle slope.
What are we doing here? Wait. There is a more rapid slope on this draw. See this contour lines here? So, this looks like it's been undisturbed. This is 322.
Right. So, that's 323.
All right.
But this line, this line right here is closer to the pond than this one is. So, here's, here's the edge of the pond, so that the contours are just shown in different areas.
Yeah, I know, but...
Up here does look, up here is a little steeper.
Yeah, I'm looking at the slope. This is a shallow slope.
Yeah.
And there was no requirement. Now, we have a steeper slope than this showed. Um, meaning that the water flow would be greater.
Yeah, so he's got, yeah, he has a steeper slope here. And it looks like we have it more consistent. We have it consistent all the way down and, and, you know, leveler down this side.
Well, these contours are about 20 feet apart, it looks like. You did it. Oh, okay. So, let's just find where this one is. 324. 324. 322. That's not so dissemblant. Right, let's go to the next one. 324 to 326. Yeah. This is a steep...
So, here's one thing that's gonna goof us up a little. Here's, this is a 1 and 50 scale.
Yeah.
This is a 1 and 40 scale. No, don't get me wrong, this is...
No, but I was looking at this.
I know, but you're comparing a 1 and 40 scale against a 1 and 50 scale.
This is about 20 feet right there, okay? So, we started at 22. Right? And we went 322. So... Then we went to 324, which is in here.
Yeah.
No.
Well, and the other thing is, you're looking at, this is 322, this is 324. These are two-foot increments. Here, he has a one-foot increments.
I understand that. I saw that. That's why I went by the numbers. So... So, there is a difference in slope than originally projected. And based on the photograph, so you had the soil erode down right at the swell of the basin?
Yeah, right, right along that section right here.
Right.
Right, that's within five feet of the basin. The majority of it, right?
Of what? I'm sorry.
The erosion was pretty much within five feet of the basin. It wasn't... It's hard to see with your pictures, but...
Roughly that's what I see. We didn't really get a shot of it, like, from across the pond. We got it looking down.
Right.
Well... Well, that's why you have the erosion, I think. In this basin. So, there's been no evidence of overflow in the street at all?
No. Would some plantings be?
Say what?
Would some plantings be a help, Brett? I mean, I don't know. I, I don't know. I'm just throwing it out.
Yeah, yeah, no, um...
You guys have some great plans.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I personally like to try grass. If you want to come and inspect it, and if you're not happy with it, then we can do something else. Like, I, I, I don't have a problem with that. I really think, I really think lomit and a, and a hay mat and some seed. Um, or I'll even hydroseed it and put the hay mat down. I really think that would take care of it.
As long as they can establish...
As long as we get a little jump on it, right?
Okay, well, in conclusion, I don't think this is necessary. We'll try to modify the vegetation here to reduce that erosion. Over here, we're gonna add the spillway, Brett. And that's what I think.
Stan hit, and I can get a letter from Stan, too, if, if you'd mind. I, I really like to involve him as little as possible. He said, um, a riprap spillway would be okay here, if you want me to put in the outlet control structure. He's, in, in all the time, in all the rain we've had, that basin has really never been more than, I, I wouldn't even say a two-thirds, a third full. Uh, if you want the pipe and...
Well...
And, uh, that, that's my, I guess we've changed enough, so that's easy enough to do.
I, I don't know which is better.
I, it's, it's never gonna see water, so whatever, wha- whatever makes your folks happy will do. I'll do the pipe. I'll just do the pipe. That's fine.
Okay, Beth, do you have those notes?
Yep. Basin 82, we're gonna install the pipe and the, the overflow pipe to the west direction.
That would be east.
To the east direction, okay, yeah. And then lomit and seed and, um, hay mat, the area above basin one. What's that directional?
Uh, I guess that would be, uh, what, northeast?
Do we have any supporting documents about that road always being gravel?
I believe it's...
Aquifer protection, right? It's in the aquifer protection overlay district? Overlay district, yeah. I, I think that's why it's not paved.
Okay.
It's aquifer protection.
Okay. I'm glad we put in that stone trench, if I can pave it. I love that.
Ah, I bet you would, yeah. Okay.
I think it would be nice.
Okay, I think that we have all the notes and Brett seems to be in agreement with it. And, Robert, thank you for all your input. And Jessica, I would, um, I just want to mention, just let's have it here now, what, um, what comes next? And once the certificate of completion is issued, what is the, um, what is the reporting on the stormwater conditions thereafter? So, if there is an issue in, in the future, then a correction will need to be made. What is the process for that?
Um, well, I think the bottom logos have a section in it that, yeah, the planning board can, um, and, you know, upon a site inspection, if there's something's wrong, um, with the system operation, they can go ahead and, um, ask for, you know, the situation to be rectified.
Please remind me, is it a yearly report that gets sent in to the planning board? Or is it every six months? Every quarter? What, what happens after the completion certificate is , um, issued as far as inspection reports?
I'll take this one. So, this is, um, I have 175 open in front of me. So, at a minimum, inspections by the property owner shall occur twice during the first year of operation and then at least annually thereafter. Inspection reports shall be submitted to the authority, you guys here, the planning board, on Form SM12, which we can share with Brett, um, and other major stormwater permities. Um, and shall include, you know, inspections, different conditions of all the stormwater infrastructure and the vegetation, the outlet control structures, the slopes, um, inlets, outlets, underground drainage, sediment accumulation, all sorts of things. So, um, for the first year after issuance of that certificate of completion, um, we are looking for two or biannual reports. And then after that, from years two on into perpetuity, um, that annual report.
Okay, so I just wanted that as part of the record. And I think, um, we have a situation where during the process of the construction of it, there were no reports given. And is, is that something that's done, because there's other stormwater permits out there? Is that something that's done every month or every other month? Is it every...
Yeah, it's very standard permit condition is monthly inspection report submittals for all permit types, both major and minor during the life of the permit. Yep. So, Brett did submit to our, or, um, I guess at the last meeting, the month, the missing monthly inspection report. So, we do have those on file now.
Okay, very good. Okay, so that answers my questions and they're on the record. And is there anything else? Robert, thank you for your input. It was much appreciated. Brett, do you have any other questions or comments?
Those are permits, uh...
What are you saying, Beth? I, I'm not hearing...
The certificate of completion is, he requested that from the board, so, um, we've only done one other one in the past, and that's for the solar array. So, how you want to proceed, I don't know. If you want to wait until there's a formal written understanding of what needs to be done or what, you know, is...
I think we should, I think we should do that with all the, I mean, we're in an agreement.
Yeah.
Just a matter of putting it all into writing.
Okay.
Do you mind, do you mind if I read what's in the regulations for this step?
Please do.
Thank you.
I will. All right. Section 17547F, Certificate of Completion for All Projects. The agent shall inspect the system to confirm its as-built features and evaluate the effectiveness of the system in an actual storm. If the inspection finds the system to be adequate and if upon receipt and approval of the final reports, which I'll summarize in a moment, it is determined that all work has been satisfactorily completed, the authority will issue a certificate of completion. And I will backtrack the said final reports. Um, after the system has been constructed, the applicant shall submit a report to the authority, including certified as-built plans documenting that the system and approved modifications have been completed in accordance with the conditions of the permit. Any discrepancies and mitigation measures shall be noted in a cover letter.
So, that's where we are right now.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah. So, we're just, we're just trying to sort of hash out the components of these materials submitted, yeah.
Let's, let's think about where we are. 90% of the insulation's been completed. We have some modifications that need to be done. Do you all agree that's about where we are with this?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I just want to...
And so, she's saying the next step is that, um, Mr. King should submit a report.
Right.
As, as mentioned in the regulations, yeah.
So, based on that, with the modifications we reviewed tonight that are going to be executed, we just need a final inspection and that's all done, and then we can give a completion. Is that correct?
And as, as she noted, to, uh, watch it during a storm, you know, observe it during a storm. And in the meantime, a report of everything that, you know, including the as-built and the changes and stuff.
Well, we're almost there.
So, I think, I mean, this stuff has been submitted a little bit piecemeal on, on my end. So, the only thing we need is, um, an email or formal letter to you, a memo to you, saying that we are in agreement, we're gonna fix the washout.
Yeah.
And we're gonna add the missing, um, overflow in pond two, I believe it is, right? And that's all we need to do, right? Everything else is, all the other requirements have been met, correct?
Right. Do we need to do another inspection during a storm, Beth? Or...
I can, I'll go out there on Wednesday. Smozy on guy. How's that sound? Sounds like it'll put it to the test.
Is it gonna storm and...
Oh, well, we got all the snow melt coming, too. It's gonna be like 50, so I think it'll be a great day.
But the modifications won't be made until spring, though, so it's really not gonna be...
Well, if it's an active permit, we're allowed to go inspect anyway, so it's not that far.
It's actually expired, so actually it's not an active permit. But you're more than welcome to go look at it. I'm not saying don't go look at it, but...
Okay, so if, I mean, that's another issue then, if the board, you know, if there's, if, if the as-built is inadequate, for lack of a better word, to date, you guys might need to consider an extension, but that is up to the board.
I don't think we've determined it's inadequate yet. I think we've determined that we can improve on some uh, surface issues that are happening that we can improve on.
And I, I'd like to see something, if the board is in agreement, I'd like to see Beth draft the, an agreement between the board and Brett of, of the meeting this evening, what was agreed upon. And once the, and once those items are done, whether it be in the spring or not, uh, if he, if he needs an extension for the permit, we give him an extension. And in the spring, when all those other, other items are done, then he comes back in and he gets his completion permit. But at least tonight, you, we've met, we've, we've come a long way in the last couple of meetings with information that was asked for. And now we're in the dead of winter. It's just gonna take time to get those other couple of things done. But I think that we have this, that we seem to be in agreement. But I think that we have this, that we seem to be in agreement on what needs to be done, and I think that we should give him that in writing. Any other comments?
All the other items you mentioned, there's just two, right? I'm just worried you're going to have.
Two, yeah, no.
There's two.
Yeah, it's just.
No, just exactly what was discussed tonight. Just.
And that's how it is put in, and has grown enough that we've had a heavy rain to see that it stabilizes the soil.
Yeah.
I think that's the only concern that we have right now, is really stabilizing the soil. You presented the topic about the catch basin, probably would just be visible all the time, the overflow. So, but you agreed to put that in, so.
Absolutely.
Right. So I, I, from that respect, that's a belt and suspenders thing we're providing. And so I guess the only thing is that controlling, do a little more to control the erosion on that salt tool, right?
So, just for clarity, is it, okay, if the letter is drafted by you to the planning board? I want to make sure I understand that. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be doing anything, or he would draft the letter?
He could draft a letter for this evening's meeting and give that to Mr. King.
Oh, so you want me to draft it?
Yeah.
Okay.
On behalf of the board in this meeting, what we agreed upon.
Okay, understood.
Is that okay, Brett?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, Robert? Carol?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to make it any more complicated than what it is, but this is what we agree on, let's give it to him in writing, and in a couple of months, when he's all done, he can let us know. And Jessica, you can go out anytime you want. It's an, it's an active permit, now do we, can we state in that letter that we have extended his permit for three months?
Sure, I mean, of course, yeah, I mean, that would be absolutely fine, extended.
Why don't we extend it six months so the soil can grow and?
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Is that good with you, Brett?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
That's six months it is.
Six months? Great, I'll drop that.
Correction, when, when did it expire, we want to be sure.
Six months.
We can extend it till June.
It's like the end of, end of July.
All right, so.
I mean, depending on what April's like, you know, worst case.
Right, so we should extend it till June of this year.
Through June or August, probably.
Yeah. So, it doesn't appear it's expired.
Right, so, great. Okay, all right, I'll draft that, and you guys can redo it now.
Now, Jessica, since we're going to extend it until the end of June, or August, whatever they just decided, does that mean he has to do a monthly report now?
Um.
Do you?
That's, I think that's fair. I, I don't want to open a can of worms, but Beth, maybe you can help me, didn't this permit expire, like, over a year ago, though?
So there's, oh, a couple of years, I think it expired in 2021, so.
We've just decided, the three of us, to give him an extension.
It's okay, yeah, I mean.
I, I under, I do, I get it, and I get a, a pain that the permit's been expired for years, I don't know if it's.
Yeah.
A good practice to extend a permit that's been expired for so long.
When was the last inspection report filed?
September 2022.
What, 22?
Isn't that what we said, September 19, 2022?
For the permit or for my last inspection?
For my last inspection, we, I thought we said.
I know it was 2022 or 2023.
2022.
I, I know what it was.
Yeah.
After it was stabilized, I kind of stopped.
Yeah, exactly, I think it was 2022.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm glad we do a permit, I mean, a inspection every month, but I'll, I'll be honest, it's going to say.
It's going to change, I, I don't, I don't see the.
Okay, I just wanted to have the conversation, so that's not necessary. Brett, if you could just keep us posted with what your progress is? If you could just.
Sure.
Right, as you do whatever you do, just let us know.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, thank you, Robert.
Thank you, folks, thank you.
Okay. Now, Beth, do you want to share the mandatory referrals, please, and we'll take one at a time? 20.
Oh, yeah.
Clement Road and 355.
Yeah.
And then I'd like.
I'm going to hop off, everybody, have a good night.
Thanks, Jessica. And then Beth, you should go to your administrative report after that, and then we will be done. For this evening.
So.
Is that 2.7?
We are going.
So this one is, it's a, what we call, here, I'll put it up on screen. I think you've all done these before. Yeah, so you're familiar with mandatory referrals when you
Yep.
give them to other departments, so this one's from the ZDA to the planning board.
Okay.
Basically, we went through and noted that a few special permits for accessory apartments had expired. We reached out, and those individuals have submitted applications for renewal with the ZDA. And the planning board is asked to just comment if you have any comments or concerns. I have looked through all the applications, everything is in order, I'll quickly bring them up now. 23 Shirley Road was permitted originally, one of my first permits, in 2018. So I don't know if you want to comment on it, or.
So this is, this is their five-year renewal?
Yes.
That is, it was 2018, okay.
And the bylaw was amended so that there is no longer our five-year renewal period. It, it's not in the bylaw amendment, so.
Then why are they applying?
Well, in their permit, which was granted in 2018, they have, it's explicitly written in that special permit that it has to be renewed every year. So that even though the bylaw changed, in their case, they had to renew. And, and what the ZDA has been doing is issuing a sunset clause on these permits, and just basically, yeah, when they.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then it's up to the board, but I would definitely encourage the application to be renewed and the sunset clause. Any other comments?
No.
Is that the, okay with the board to say that?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I want to encourage people, I don't, I don't want to say no comment.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it's writing a unit to live in, and I think that's a good thing.
Okay.
Okay, so that would be my comment there. 99 Clement Road.
Very similar situation, there's still a family member living in the accessory apartment. Everything looks good in terms of the application. Nothing's changed, everything was constructed as per the permit. So again, a family member's living there, and everything's going well.
And same thing, they will do a sunset clause on the permit
Yeah.
renewal, okay. At the same climate as before.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Hmm, that's good.
Next one, 355 Main Street.
Very similar situation, still a family member living in the apartment, and the apartment was constructed per the building inspector, and per, per the building permit, and everything is in order at 355 Main Street.
Okay, same thing.
Okay.
Can I, on this topic?
Yeah, it's up to the chair.
I'd like to request that the board members review Article 9, Special Provisions of the zoning bylaw, referencing accessory apartments and residential districts, so that we can address some things in that at our next meeting.
Yes, I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
Put that under work session next meeting?
Well, yeah, what I particularly want people to focus on is Item E and F, okay?
Okay.
So you want to discuss where you're starting the bylaw?
Item E and F, and make that a part of the minutes this evening?
Right.
Could be discussed at next meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Which would be, would that be the 22nd of January? Where are we here?
We have the 22nd of February. Yes.
Okay, and while we mention that, I'll mention that I will, I will be on Zoom, I will be out of state on that date. But I will, I will be attending.
Thank you.
So. Okay, what's not on the agenda, but, but I, I am intending for us to review is, oh, why, is 3, 3.1 never got on the agenda? Your administrative report for this evening, Beth?
Oh, yeah, that would be 2.2, I guess. I have it on 3.1 on, on the form, but it's actually 2.2 on the agenda, sorry.
Yes, it is, you're right. All right, that little correction. I think it's been 3.1 before, so 2.2. Okay.
Want me to go through that quickly?
Yeah, well, you don't have to go through 1.1A, right, because we just did that.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, so under applications, as you remember, 108 West Meadow Road, the Scenic Roads Act approval was granted by the planning board on the 18th of the last meeting. The decision has been signed and is on file with the town clerk. For interdepartmental approvals, 106 Haynes Road, I think you heard about that in the, in the conservation public hearing notice, so I won't go into too much detail. They're going to demo the house and build a new one with a well and all that.
This was the property, this was the property that the town sold.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, so it's getting a new life. 2 Capricorn Lane, 20 by 12 addition to the back of the residence, plus a 24 by 11 deck is going to be built. 80 Main Street, there is going to be an addition to the building, ramp and stairs, stormwater management and septic system installation. We're waiting on additional information from the project team to determine if site plan review will be necessary. This building permit approval is pending. For site visits and compliance, 66 Bayberry Hill Road, the stormwater management permit is inactive. Candle Farm OSPD stormwater permit, we received proof of recording, and that is in compliance. 98 to 100 West Meadow Road, earth disturbing activity was noted, a letter was sent to the owner, and we are still waiting for information on that. 22 Main Street, product, project modification was noted, owner's been notified via a letter. The owner confirmed receipt of the letter, and we are waiting response. We did receive an email late this afternoon, however, it. So.
I couldn't hear you.
We did receive an email from the owner late today, but wasn't time to review it. So how would you like me to proceed with that?
So she met the deadline of the letter?
No, there was a letter that I got in the inbox, basically, late this afternoon regarding the requirements of the application to the planning board in response to the letter that was sent them. Would you like me to send that to you, or how would you like me to do, to put that on the next agenda?
Well, why don't you send that to the board?
Okay, all right.
My question was, it seems we got this report before that a letter had been sent. My, my question was, was she given a date to answer by in the letter that was sent to her?
Um, let me check, it's in the folder. I think it was, I think it was contingent on the building permit being issued. So the building department would not issue a building permit for that addition until the owner complied with requirements made to the planning board. So that's kind of the timeline. And, and I have a copy of the letter that I put in the folder. So I think that was the prompt, you know, for action. Because the building permit won't issue on that project change, okay.
Yeah, but she's working on it now.
Yeah, she hasn't signed anything.
There is no building permit issued yet. Yeah, okay. So I will forward that letter to the board, and I will have it on the 22nd agenda for you. So 22 West Meadow Road, Lockwood Solar Array. There, again, we are still waiting on some, we have received some information, and it is under review. That's the one where there was earth disturbing activity along the edge of the river, on the corner of the property near the array. So we have received some information, and we're looking at it now. Peritrace is current with monthly reports, and did issue a recent construction update. 3-Mealer Road is also a stormwater permit is current. Turnpike Road, a three construction site meeting was held right after Christmas. On, on December 27th, the permit holder is submitting weekly construction phase inspection reports, given the short construction schedule for the basin. So they've agreed to, to help, you know, kind of, they're moving along really quickly. Hopefully with the snow, I don't know.
Yeah.
So that's, the site is in compliance. So 108, 110, and 112 West Meadow Road, a letter was sent from Land Use to the owner with actions required regarding applicability of land disturbance on the parcels and the filing of a stormwater management permit. There actually is a deadline on that letter, and so we are continuing to reach out and work with the owner on that. He needs to provide a determination whether or not a stormwater permit needs to be filed. I'll scan through miscellaneous. We received the concepts, preliminary concept study from the intersection study of Route 119 and 13 from MRPC, and they're available for your review and comment. Please send me any comments you have, MRPC will be formulating the final report. The annual town election will be held April 22nd. Nomination papers will be available January 16th through March 1st, and will need to be returned by March 4th. There are two positions open, two terms expiring, one five-year position and one three-year position. Just a quick update on that, the person who wants to take out papers for a vacant position will come into the town clerk office and pick up the nomination papers for the position they wish to run for. After they obtain 40 valid signatures from registered voters in the town of Townsend, they should get 40 to 50 signatures, just to be sure. They return the papers to the town clerk by March 4th. Sign them in front of the town clerk, and then the town clerk will certify signatures. And if you have enough, the name is placed on ballot. So just check your terms, please. And if you have any questions about that, can ask the town clerk.
Sure, that's me.
All right, so ask Kathy, the town clerk, to know what the whole plan is, know the whole process. So ethics training. All board members have to complete this mandatory training and send your certificate to the town clerk. Okay. We talked about 17513, definitive subdivision regulations. We talked about the public hearing. We talked about that. So the other thing that I want to mention is there's an AGO training on zoning bylaw amendment process and bylaw filing. I sent it out to the board earlier, but it's an online training by the AGO, so it's going to be good. It's tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. If anybody wants that information to register, I can send it again.
Say what?
It's a workshop, maybe AGO's office, the Attorney General's office, training on zoning bylaw amendment process and bylaw filing. So the new MFOD overlay district bylaw that Townsend is going to be filing with the AG once it's through town meeting. This is all about the statutory process, the requirements that the town has to make, you know.
And it's tomorrow, or can?
Yes.
How long is the training?
I just can't do it, you know.
I'll go, I'll go.
Yeah, I'll be at the doctor's.
It's online, so I'll attend, yeah.
Yeah, but how long is?
I'm sorry?
How long is it?
Oh, I believe, it doesn't say. So I'm thinking an hour or two, maybe two, 10 to noon, probably.
All right, send me the link. I'll see if I can.
Awesome, okay.
But you should be.
And as far as the CPTC Fall Planning Workshops, tomorrow night is related again. It's adopting and revising rules and regulations of boards. That's tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m., so if you can.
Adopting rules and regulations of what?
Boards.
Of the boards.
Yeah, of the boards.
Of the boards.
Yeah, yep, so when a new bylaw, you know, perhaps a new bylaw is passed, you want to create regulations, this is exactly how that process works, so. So like, we're revising the regulations now. This will help us understand better how that's done. And then there's another one on fair housing laws. That one's on the 16th of January, again, in the evening. Okay, so we took care of MBTA Communities Update. Just an update on the Townsend Free March Service. As I noted in the last report, ridership has been very low. So town, I think the town administrator has scheduled a marketing strategy meeting with March, which is Monticello Area Regional Transportation, to consider, you know, some corrective message, you know, put out some marketing messages and try to get some ridership there. And so, yeah, thanks.
Thank you for that. Is everybody ready to adjourn?
Yes.
Our next meetings are the 22nd of January and February 12th. And if there is no further business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:08 p.m.
I'll make the motion to adjourn at 8:08 p.m.
I second that motion.
Okay, over discussion, I'll make a roll call vote.
Carol Hawes, yes.
Robert Darian, yes.
Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you very much. I apologize for not saluting the flag this evening. My bad. I want to thank all of our veterans, and I want to say Happy New Year to everyone, and stay healthy, and God willing, for peace.